Welcome to the Wednesday, March 22, Board of Franklin County Commissioners.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
President.
Commissioner Harris. Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Dunn.
President.
I share Waymire.
All right, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. When we come into this hall with liberty and justice for all. All right, correspondence and organizational business. Public comment.
I have one.
All right, a citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. The discussion is limited to five minutes and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or impending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Shandy Proudey.
Sorry, guys. Okay. Hi, Shandy Proudey, 4848 Louisiana Road. Do I have to take my hat off?
No, it's fine.
Okay, bold ones to Kansas. Just want to be respectful. Okay, guys, hi. All right, so the reason I wanted to speak with you guys this morning really, really quickly, sorry, I got in at 1:30 this morning from a work trip, but there were some comments last week made and I just wanted to clarify a few things. I wasn't able to meet with anyone. So first off, I want to just make sure that you guys know that the group, I'm just going to say it, that the group that is on Facebook, and I was forced to run the Facebook group, is the commercial is different than the residential renewables. There's a big difference. And I'm not talking about solar, I'm not talking about any of that stuff. I'm just talking about wind because I just want to focus on wind. But commercial wind, industrial wind, is what we're discussing, and that is what no one likes. Residential wind, if you want to have it, great, everybody can have residential wind because that's your house. There's also a difference between a ban and a moratorium. So Anderson County, Osage County, Shawnee County, Sedgwick County, they all have bans on industrial wind. A moratorium is just a pause. It's just a, let's hold off for just a second. It's not that you're for it or against it, let's just hold off on it. A couple of other things is that the talking points that were stated last week, those were borrowed. We've heard those before. And so that was, to me, a little disheartening, but I want to make sure that you guys know that the residents in Franklin County, they kind of feel attacked. They kind of feel like, we didn't ask for this. We don't, we don't want this. And so I just want to make sure that you guys know that no one is asking for anything to be slippery. No one is asking for anything to be slid underneath. You know, we're not asking for solar to be slid under wind by any means. We want to keep it focused on wind. And I appreciate that you guys are. I appreciate that you guys are reading the emails and listening to us and listening to your constituents. I also know that they don't, the residents and even myself, when commercial companies come in like this, the residents do not own their land anymore. These foreign companies are coming in. For example, Sumner County has 78,000 acres owned by Portugal and Italy. Neosho County, also Thomas County, these are, ESPN, I think that is France and Germany. And so that's what we don't want to have happen, are these commercial companies to come in, take our land, and tell us what we aren't able to do with them. So we've always wanted things to be done right. I feel like we've always been respectful and we want to make sure to continue to keep it that way. And so I appreciate you guys. Thank you so much. And I'm excited to go through the process with you and we want to make it as painless as possible, too. Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right, so our consent agenda today consists of the minutes from our meeting from March 15, and then our minutes from the study session on Monday, March 20.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
All right, our only order of businesses today is discuss the proposals, most of which we heard on Monday, and we have a couple that are presenting to us today.
We should have three partners here today. We have Paul Bean from FCDC. We have Diana Starsen-McDean from the Franklin County Historical Society, and we have Justin Webb from Franklin County Agricultural Society. Paul Bean has asked if he could go first, so because he has a meeting to get to at nine, so.
All right, Paul Bean.
We have Paul come on up.
If it were up there, I'd let you go last. How about them Razorbacks? Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to visit with you today about your tremendous support of FCDC. Sorry I couldn't be here last week, I was enjoying my grandkids. Really, the only change from the previous years is this year I actually am asking the county for a 5% increase in your funding. That would move it from 64,375 to 67,593, or an increase of $3,218. I don't remember, I came on board in 2019, and I know we haven't had an increase over that period of time, so that's been at least four years, and the average inflation rate over those four years is a little over 5%. So inflation's been about 20% over that period of time when you average it out. Obviously in 2019, it wasn't that high, but. So that's the reason my compensation isn't increasing, hasn't increased this year, won't increase next year, just trying to cover for inflation and natural increases in cost. And that's really the only change in the requests from previous years. But happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Any questions? Any comments? We have the spreadsheet that goes back all the way to 2015, and back then it was only 62.5, so it really hasn't.
Hasn't gone up a lot, yeah.
It has not gone up a lot, so.
Comment?
Yeah.
Paul's been, since I've been here, that he's, I'm not saying other people didn't do things, but Paul's just went at them at a different perspective. He tried to work hands-on, face-to-face with the communities instead of just getting a letter in the mail or something, or here's something in the paper. He physically goes to them face-to-face and not only offers them things they can do, but offers to help them, you know, the best he can to help them with that. That's something we've never had. And then he's, right now, he's working with bringing agriculture more into our economic development, which we all know Franklin County is a big share of what we do, is agriculture.
That's my next meeting I got to get to. It's an ag meeting.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I would definitely say that you have actually made a Franklin County Development Council instead of a Ottawa Development Council, so you really truly have reached out into the county.
Want to bring up your industry luncheon? Oh, yeah. Industry luncheon, certainly invited, just need RSVPs for food, but on April 5th, well, FCDC, we're going to start our industry luncheons again. We did one and then COVID hit, and it was a big hit. We're going to be at McFasteners on April 5th, so people can come out and have lunch and network, and then people who want to stay after lunch can get a tour of that industry. And so if you're interested in attending that, just let me know and we'll put you down for that. We've got a little over 20 people now signed up, so that'll only get bigger.
Is that the same type of thing we had a long time ago at?
At Walmart, yeah.
PCD.
April 5th?
April 5th, over the noon hour. Yep, yep. And if I can, just one quick thing. I want to let you know that Commerce Department reached out to me yesterday, and there's an industry conference, site selector conference in Vegas that they hold every year. It's in Vegas this year in April. And Commerce reached out to me and asked me to be part of the Kansas delegation to that, and they're going to pay the registration fee, which is $1,800. And so we'll have a good representation. I'll help represent the state, but obviously pushing Franklin County as well. So it's a great opportunity, and I think that was symbolic of the relationship we have with Commerce, that they asked me to be on that team. So I was excited about that. I thought that was good for our community. You know, I couldn't agree more, Commissioner. That's the least favorite place for me, but that's where it is.
Now we know what the raise is for.
No, that's next year.
Can you double that?
Yeah. Yeah, if I could pick anywhere but Vegas, I would pick it. That's for sure, Rod.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's move on to the Franklin County Historical Society. Diana Starsen-McDean. I know I butchered your name because that's just crazy, but Diana. Diana is here.
Why don't you just, hey Diana, did you just pull it up? Get out of there. Yeah, it's not listening to me either. There you go. Where would this be on there? That's just regular. It does, yeah. And your clicker.
Thank you. Okay. Well, good morning. As you know, I'm Diana Starsen-McDean. I'm the Executive Director of the Franklin County Historical Society, and I want to thank you for letting me present today. Monday, I was in Dodge City learning how to assemble the Smithsonian exhibit, which is coming later this fall. I'll talk more about that in a minute, but I'm still kind of beat from driving nine hours in less than 24. So, but that is where I was. So I appreciate you letting me present today. I just want to briefly highlight what we did last year, what we're looking forward to this year, and then our funding request for 2024.
Did you flip the little switch on the side?
Yeah.
It's green.
It is green, actually. I wonder if it's got a dead battery.
That's great.
Sounds like it's recognizing it now.
I'll change it from.
Yep, that's fine. Next slide. Worst case, we've got printouts, right? Okay, so last year was eventful. What you're seeing on the screen right now is Marla Day, who gave a program on Kansas fashion designer Nellie Dawn in October. You might recall one of our goals was to expand our programming outside of Ottawa, and we were able to host this Humanities Kansas-sponsored program at the Greenwood Community Center. So we're starting to go out to locations around the county so that we can reach more people. Next slide, please. But this was our biggest accomplishment, I think, last year. Our big move was the big move. We continue to unpack and correct catalog records. We anticipate we'll be doing this probably for another couple of years. But we are finding that being next to the tourism office has made our archives much more visible, and we are helping more people. Despite being closed for several months to researchers and to donations, we ended up assisting 147 researchers, about a third of whom came in person to do research. A lot of our researchers are also people who live elsewhere, who are historians or who are genealogists who contact us. Okay, next slide, please. We didn't accept as many donations this last year because we didn't have a way to accept them, but we still had 56 accessions and 910 artifacts. So an accession is if you bring us a box of things, that is a single accession. All of the things in the box are individual artifacts. So 56 accessions, 910 artifacts. That sounds like a lot, but an individual program to a school musical is an artifact. So think about lots of little things, photographs, buttons, pins, that kind of thing. We also received some really fun things. What you're looking at on the screen is a 1945 brownie uniform, pardon me, a Hamilton Scotch Little Jug Cooler that was made here in Ottawa, and a shave permit. Apparently during the Kansas Centennial, you had to pay if you didn't want to grow a beard. So you had to buy a button. So we have a few wonderful weird little things that have been added to our collection this past year. Next slide, please. Moving is an expensive endeavor. We allocated a lot of staff hours and finances to the process of packing, preparing, and improving our new location and moving. We estimate this relocation cost us about $20,000, $22,000 in human resources and then one-time equipment and service expenses. We were very fortunate, though, to receive gifts of furniture, technology, packing materials, a lot of volunteer time, and some funds to help us mitigate those costs and to keep them from being even higher. Next slide, please. After two rather bleak years during the pandemic, our Old Depot Museum visitorship has increased dramatically. We had 2,752 visitors in 2022, which is actually about a 15% increase over what we were seeing before the pandemic, which is really amazing. Next slide, please. I wanted to share this with you. This is our walk-in visitor demographics. These are the people who come in off the street, not part of a school group, not part of an organized visit, just people who decide to come to the depot. What's so interesting to me is that societies tend to skew toward an older audience, and museums in general tend to skew towards an older audience. It's not uncommon for children to only make up about 15% of visitors at most museums, unless it's specifically a children's museum. This year, our visitorship from in-county residents was 45% children, which is really amazing. We are just drawing a larger crowd of families than we used to, and what we're finding is that since we stopped charging actual admission during the pandemic and went to donations, we're getting as much in donations, but I think families are feeling more comfortable taking a gamble on coming in. They're fine with coming in for just 20 or 30 minutes or whatever their kids can handle, and they come back. And we're finding that the kids who come for one-room school come back the following weekend and say, I was here for one-room school and I wanted to bring my family. So we're seeing more, more kids. Our out-of-area visitors still lean a little bit older. About 40% are over 55, but these also tend to be our tourists, our day trippers. These are the people who make the depot part of a visit that includes lunch or dinner or shopping downtown. So they're contributing in financially to our tourism trade, too. Okay, next slide, please. It's so pretty. It doesn't look sick anymore. The Godbert Foundation generously gave us the funds to paint the caboose. It looks beautiful. We see bridal couples taking their pictures, prom, the, all the dances. People with their little kiddos are all taking pictures of the caboose. It's a really wonderful photo op for people in town and people out of town. Next slide, please. We've also been asked to do some pop-up exhibits around the community and to help area businesses and the city build mini exhibits in their spaces. We created this one for Neosho County Community College this past fall. They wanted to welcome students back to campus with historic, images of historic moments in Ottawa's history. So this was in their rotunda for about a month. And we continue to work with other community organizations like the library, the other museums in our county, and anyone else who wants us to help them do something related to Franklin County history. Okay, next slide, please. You are actually looking at the workbench of Steve Messerall, who's one of our model railroad volunteers. His project for the past several months has been building a replica of the Ottawa Co-op buildings as they appeared in the 1950s. This is going to go on the model railroad layout here pretty soon, and this is kind of setting the tone for 2023. We have been, we're getting ready to just do a lot of really cool building of all kinds. Next slide, please. Our roof repairs are beginning. The State Historic Preservation Office has increased our grant. We will not be able to do the entire roof, but we're going to start on the side where we have kiddie pools catching water. So we will actually be able to get started here in just a couple of weeks. They're starting to bring materials. It's just going to depend on when materials come in and what the weather does. But we are starting repairs, so we're really excited about that. We had the bad luck of getting that grant, then we hit that intersection of it was worse than we thought, and the materials started to get really expensive during the pandemic. So that delayed us for a little bit. Next slide. We're really excited to be able to offer hybrid meetings. At the end of last year, we invested in a little owl, which is that little machine there. It serves as both as a video feed, a microphone, and a speaker, and also when you turn it on, it actually hoots. But it lets us do really great hybrid meetings. We discovered, first of all, the Archives and Research Center is a great space to host programs. We can hold about 50 people in there, and for the first time, we have internet fast enough in one of our buildings that we don't have to run the meeting out of my house. We are able to, you know, we were offering these online meetings during the pandemic, and what we learned was there were a lot of people we never reached with in-person meetings before. They worked, they have young children and can't come to a program, they may have some physical challenges. It makes it harder for them to come to a program, and we didn't want to abandon all of these people who are participating just because we were going back to in-person meetings. So we now have the technology to be able to do both. And for example, what you see on the screen, this is Grady Atwater from the John Brown State Historic Site. He is demonstrating how John Brown's men used swords during the Potawatomi massacre, so he looks rather menacing. But we had 49 people in person and 45 people online who were all participating in this program. Next slide, please. We've also added to our programming for children. This is How Things Change. This is targeted towards third graders, and during this experience, we show students how everyday objects like telephones, cameras, irons evolve over time. It's a lot of fun. Third graders are fun because they're not jaded yet, and it's also a little humbling to realize your average third grader doesn't know what a camera is because they've never seen anyone take pictures with anything but a cellphone. So it's a really interesting experience. Next slide, please. We're also finally in a position with being able to meet in person, being through this move, to be able to do some actual fundraisers. Coming up here on April 1st is a 5K fun run or walk, starting at the depot. And we are still able to register for that if anyone is interested. Okay, next slide. Next slide, please. Here we go. Okay. This is a sneak peek of what the Smithsonian exhibit looks like. It's real, oops, back up one just, please. Voices and Votes: Democracy in America. It's coming August 19. I've given you each one of the brochures. It's stopping in six places. We're the only place in Northeast County that is getting this exhibit. The next closest ones, I believe, are Wichita and Belleville. So we are anticipating, based on other numbers that we've seen, basically getting the equivalent of our annual visitorship during that six weeks. So we're expecting a lot of people. We will have some extended hours. We will also have a lot of programming thanks to a grant from Humanities Kansas. There's, we'll have six tie-in programs, and we'll have our own companion exhibit called Barely Made It: The Naked Voters and Other Franklin County Stories of Democracy, which will have a county-wide component, too. And because we're lucky enough to get this exhibit during the school year, we're really hoping to work with the schools in Franklin County to engage them in this exhibit as well. All right, one more slide. Okay. Looking ahead to 2024, our greatest concerns are probably the same as everyone else's, facing increasing operational expenses that are, to some extent, out of our control. The county has very generously funded us at a rate of $71,000 annually for over a decade. We are requesting a modest increase just to help us absorb some of those increased operational costs we're facing, which are not the kind of costs we can generally get grant funding for. I have no doubt all of us can create a graph just like this one. This is our utilities for the Old Depot Museum. Between 2019 and 2022, our electricity, water, and gas have increased $3,000 just for that building. We are, I had just applied for a grant to help us do some more HVAC improvements and lighting improvements, which would hopefully improve the efficiency of our HVAC. We've got the new units that the county helped us purchase a few years ago, but there's still some airflow issues. And if we can improve our lighting, we can curtain off those big glass windows, which bring in a lot of heat. We really struggle to keep that second floor under 85 degrees in the summer when we have those really hot days. So we're hoping that that grant will come through. So that is a challenge that we face. Similarly, even though we don't pay the electric bill at our new archives, we are installing light blocking curtains so that in the summer, during the afternoons, we can close those windows off a little bit and cool that building down a little bit, because that front-facing room gets really warm. Our goal in 2024 also is to include a small pay increase for our staff who could truly make more, working pretty much anywhere. And a lot of other historical societies and museums in our region actually offer internships that pay more per hour than our professional staff are making. And finally, we have this fantastic new archives. It's better suited to accommodating researchers, and we really want to accommodate researchers. We'd love to work in some Saturday hours so that people who can't be with us Monday through Friday are able to come in and take advantage of what we have to offer. So that is what I wanted to talk about today, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments?
Have you seen the increase in participation or visitors since you moved out of the visitor center? Seen a lot more people.
We have more people, yes. We have more people who are coming. We're just more visible. I mean, we're just more visible. We have people who stop in. We have more people who are asking for assistance. It's hard to tell with the numbers right now because we were close to the public for a big chunk of last year, but we've been busy.
And I'm sure they walk in and go, oh, wow, this is really nice.
Yeah, yeah. We're no longer in a haunted old nursing home that's boarded with boarded-up windows. So it's definitely an improvement aesthetically. And I would be remiss not to mention how much we appreciate the county's maintenance staff. We've had some weird water issues since we've moved in.
That's right.
We've had a flooded basement, a broken water line, a leaking roof, a leaking toilet. It's just been one thing after another. But I just, I just want to say thank you for having an amazing staff, for your maintenance staff. I know they take care of a lot of buildings, but they are always so responsive, and we're really grateful for that.
That's for you, Brandon. Good job.
Oh, hey, you're here.
All right, anything else?
Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. And I will leave some of these brochures on the table, so if anyone else is here would like one, I'm happy to give those to you.
Okay. All right, and then we have Justin Webb from the Agricultural Society, and thank you very much for coming today. And thank you very much for coming today.
I am quite sure, yeah. Next slide. Good morning, commissioners. I'm Justin Webb with the Franklin County Agriculture Society. I'm not much of a public speaker, but I sit and talk with any of you for a long time. But anyhow, we got sent in a request for $25,000 and just to upgrade our restrooms because we have no handicap-accessible restrooms in Celebration Hall. Knowing the money that we got last year is not enough to do. What we need to do is to upgrade these restrooms. So I've acquired, I've sent out a request from Bartlett West to get me some information as far as what I got to do as far as an architect. Do we renovate the building that's there? Do we tear this building down? Do we build a new building? Something to funding, I guess. They also, they provide us with funding grants or where to go to find these at. So I guess that's one of the biggest things, is getting that there under control. So what we did is we have banked the money that we received last year, it's setting in a, just in a savings account right now. And I guess I'm willing to withdraw the amount, the difference between what we normally get from our maintenance account to what we requested until we get something further straightened out as far as where we're going to go forward with. But I was requesting, I got a bid to redo the lights in the show arena, the electrical box and in the cattle barn, and do some electrical work in it. As I go in the other day and I see we, somebody had held a wedding in there last fall, and they tied the breakers open with baling wire. That's not, so we need to get those lights updated and get them breaker boxes under control. So I have a bid from Gibson's Electric for, to do the show barn is $3,816.41. And to do the lighting, to finish up the cattle barn would be $1,846.70 for a total We thought about with our normal maintenance money taken and putting in four exhaust fans, maybe would pull the heat out of the tops of those buildings would help with the circulation, airflow, stuff like that. If you get to a 48-inch fan, the best I can tell would have three-phase. And we don't have three-phase electric, and the expense of that would be pretty phenomenal. So we just stay with a 36-inch on both ends of the building would be around $450 a fan, so a total of like $1,800. So there's some stuff that needs to be taken care of, I guess, until we figure out where we're going to go with the restrooms. And we do have some kids, and I know there's some grandparents, parents that are handicapped. We do furnish them with handicap-accessible portable pots, but I don't know if anybody uses those in the summertime, but you know, they get pretty, it's pretty warm in there. And they can get rather league rank. So I guess I'm just, we're trying to figure out which is the best way to go as far as trying to upgrade these restrooms. Our restrooms, if any of you has been in there, are only about 10-foot wide and about 18 feet long. And a normal handicap stall is basically 60 by 60 square, 60 inches by 60 inches square just for one handicap stall. So anyhow, so we're going to have to move some walls and redo that building if we're going to do it. So that's what I'm working on now, trying to get somebody to kind of help us figure out how the best way to do this is. So we need to redo the driveway also going into it. As anybody knows, not everybody, they think you can throw rock in a pothole and it fills it up, which they don't last very long. They just blow them right back out. So I've been talking with Kilos about grinding that up and laying some new rock on it and either chipping seal it, or if we do go in and hard-surface it with asphalt where we can do away with these potholes and stuff, make it a little more easier, better around the buildings because they're just gravel. When it rains, it's a muddy mess. So, but anyhow, if you got any questions, Formula A, I guess I'll do the best I can to answer.
So did we give them some of our TGT money last year that, or no, our ARPA funds?
We have funds allocated for them. It has not been paid yet. We indicated to them last year, and I had some conversations with them after the meeting last year where you guys allocated the $10,000 to them, that we would need to have project documents and actually get the project going. And then we would fund that, help them fund that project to the amount of $10,000. So that has not been paid out. It is earmarked in your ARPA fund. So last year, you awarded them $12,100, which is what they had been getting for their operating purposes.
Didn't we do $20,000 in our fund or not? Just 10?
Did.
Just 10?
Oh, we did 20. We did 20 for the vans for services for the elderly.
Okay, so but you said you had some money set aside, but you have not gotten any of that money yet.
We, the county money that we got last year is setting in a savings account. It is earmarked for this, but it's not enough to do.
But that wasn't for that. That was, that was for your regular operating.
Regular maintenance money, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Would you upgrade your electrical? Are you going to add portable generators?
Well.
They're very annoying to the spectators, having all those generators running.
I understand what you're saying, but there's really, there's, we're either going to have to totally redo those boxes. I mean, those boxes, the electrical that was put in that barn was designed for what was the barn size itself. But when you got people dragging in, I mean, there's, that barn is full of fans. And I don't know how you limit it to them because, I mean, when you got kids, that's really, the agricultural side of this deal is phenomenal. I mean, we've got the most entries pre-entered right now as far as weigh-in for the beef right now that we've ever had for this next year. And it's pretty hard to keep 100 head in that barn and keep them cool when you start piling in a bunch of 1,300-pound animals. And then you put these others on the other end. But to answer your question, no, Roy, we have not, as far as that. We did go in, and the breaker boxes are split out to the point where they're evenly loaded. But we're going to run down the center. We're going to take out every other light and put in a drop cord that comes down with a turnbuckle on it where we can take those back off when the fair is over with. But that would free up us a lot of electricity, plus we wouldn't have kids climbing through the rafters trying to get to a plug-in to plug in up there.
Okay.
Electrical's been an issue, safety issue for a long time for you guys?
Yeah, it has been.
Kind of what you, it sounds like you're throwing out is to hold off on the restroom until you come up with a plan for that building?
Yes, sir.
And then reallocate that money towards your electrical issues?
Yes, sir. I mean, it appears to me that's, I mean, I'd rather save a barn than a couple of, I know the red iron structure, but you still, that's, that's a pretty good risk in there. So, but anyhow, anything else?
I know last year, we actually talked about maybe that the county could provide some gravel over there on their roads. And I know, knows if we, we kind of volunteered our department to do that, that, did we do anything over there?
Occasionally, we are asked to help with certain things over there. And to my knowledge, we've always, we've always accommodated those requests, and we certainly, certainly would again.
Yeah, they come over and remove our manure pile for us. I mean, they, and help us get that, you know, out of the way. But David's been really good.
As far as your roads, though, have you?
As far as the roads, and I mean, we haven't done anything with those.
That, he said it well, that road, something more substantial needs to be done with it. And again, we're, I think we would be happy to participate in that somehow or another. You know, we don't have lay-down equipment to lay asphalt and that sort of thing, but certainly we can, we can help with rock and those, those types of things.
I guess as far as the road armoring is, is to go in and out the back gates. Well, when you run those big six-by-six and all that there, when they're heavy, when they start turning back there, I mean, you know as well as anybody, it doesn't take much to tear them up. And those are just about an inch thick of chip and seal over time. But anyhow.
So just to be clear, you are asking for an additional $10,000, an additional $10,000 for your, and then $15,000 for your regular maintenance?
I was just asking for our regular maintenance plus the $5,600 to do the lighting.
But that doesn't come up, too. But your request was for 25?
No, I'm willing to withdraw, withdraw the difference between what we normally get and.
So the $12,100 that we gave you last year and $5,600 for electrical is what you're requesting this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Already got the 10 allocated. So would the $5,600 not come out of the 10 we've already got allocated? Or do you want another $5,600 on top of the 10 in ARPA funds?
What we normally get is what is like, they send, since normally maintenance money that we get is like $10,000.
You get $12,100?
$12,000.
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess that's what I was asking for was, yeah.
So, so instead of, but we set that aside for handicap bathrooms. So if we, if you're saying at this point, you don't want to go that direction, but you would rather use that money we have set aside for your electric?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The $12,100 is what he is asking for. Nothing else. We can pay the 56 out of the $10,000 in ARPA that we allocated last year. And then when he gets his restrooms engineered or whatever he's going to do, we can readdress that request at that time.
Okay. Does that sound good to everybody? Are we all in agreement there?
Yeah. All right.
Okay. Get back into this. Okay, so then we are going to move forward with our discussion of these requests. This is not how we usually do it. We're not going to move forward. We're done with.
We just need to hear the final three, and then we.
A week from today.
What's that?
A week from today.
Yeah, so you guys have your sheet that came in your packet, and it has a column over here for your recommendation. So if you can just put your name on this and fill in your recommendations for each partner, and then get it back to me.
Good. I thought, oh, no, I didn't think we were going to do that. So that's good. So we'll do it a week from today.
Yeah.
Awesome, all right.
You'll get it, you'll get it back to me within the next week, and then we'll have it on your agenda the next week.
Okay, so we're doing two weeks from today?
One, one week.
Get them back to me in one week, and then we'll have them on your agenda the following week.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, on our upcoming events, it doesn't have next week's study session or regular commission meeting. We are having a meeting next Wednesday, right? Today is the.
I don't know why we wouldn't.
It's the date today. Yeah. For some reason, it doesn't have the 29th, the March 29th. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something. Okay. All right, all right. Well, then I guess we've completed our items of business, staff reports. We'll start with yours.
Yeah, Brandon's going to come up and talk about a couple of projects. The only thing I have is Dr. Bud has graciously continued to act as our coroner, even though he's retired, is no longer our medical officer. He would like to keep doing that, but we do need to update his contract, need to update the pricing on that. And so that is something I am working on. Going to try to have that in front of you hopefully next week, if not the week after. Just want you to know that that's something that we're taking care of. So that's all I have.
Morning. Just want to give an update on our staffing. We are fully staffed over in our, on the law enforcement operations side now. The last two positions we filled, both of those people are already certified. So that's going to speed up the process greatly so we don't have to have that downtime to send them to the academy. So that's a really good thing for us. We do still have a couple of openings in the jail and court security, but we're making pretty good progress. We're way ahead of where some of our, some of our counterparts are in the area. So we're pretty pleased with that aspect. And I wanted to give an update as well on where we're at on the accreditation. As you know, we are going through the accreditation process, not the Kalia accreditation, that there is now a state process. The cost on that is only, it's $500 a year. And we receive all the, all the training and everything that goes along with that is all included in that. So we, so for us, it's a, it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good deal. And then we're able to share policies and ideas that way. Under Sheriff Lastwell is our accreditation manager. He worded it pretty well in a meeting the other day when he said the biggest thing with going through this process is that sometimes you don't know what it is. You don't know. And so we have been able to identify some areas that we needed, but we thought that maybe we could improve on. And so that has been beneficial to us as well. So we are going through that process. It's, the initial accreditation is about, it's about a two-year window. It's about how long that they say that that takes. And so we are moving, moving along with that. Again, with the idea that we will just increase our, the level of service we provide and our professionalism. There is still a, one of the things that's hangings over agencies is executive orders. And the current executive order says that to receive any federal funds, to include some of the grants and things that we get, you have to be accredited to be eligible for those things. So that was, that's a big driver as to why, also why we are, we're participating in that. We do have a couple of federal grants that we work with regularly that they cost us, or we benefit from those way more than $500 a year. So it was to, financially, this makes good sense for us to, to go through the process. And so that's kind of where we are on, on that right now. So unless you guys have questions for me, that's all I have at this point.
You wouldn't need one of those no-shave buttons, so, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I looked at that and I thought, well, people are paying to not shave, and we've been for years paying to, to, yeah. So it's.
First, just in response to Diana's comments about the department, that really is a testament to the staff that we've been able to build in the department. So really, the thanks goes to them. Got a lot of great guys that work for us, and they put in a lot of hard work, so. So a couple of projects that we've got, hopefully on the horizon, we're going to do eventually. Just kind of wanted to see what you all kind of thought about them, certainly as far as timeline is concerned from your perspective. But the air conditioning unit on the third floor of the jail still needs to be replaced. That only serves the third floor area, but it turns 30 years old this year, which is pretty old for an air conditioning system, so it really needs to be updated. We've been given a budget price. It's a few years old now, the budget, so these, just kind of a range, mid to upper $30,000 is kind of what we're looking at. It's kind of a complex system, so there's a little bit that goes into that, that brings it to that, to that number. But that's kind of what we're looking at for that. The other one is the slab in the district court on the west end of the building that had sunk a little bit. When we had someone look at that a few years ago, they said, and they're a professional opinion, they didn't think it was probably going to sink much more. Well, unfortunately, it's kind of started to again. So we kind of need to address something there. The next step in that, we've kind of already started some preliminary, looking into that with BG Consultants. We met with, and I think it was 2020, we met with them, and they started to put together a plan for us. The next step in that is to do some core drilling and take some samples of the soil underneath to figure out how deep we would need to go to put something to solve that problem. Mudjacking has been attempted in the past. My understanding is more than once, and that's obviously not holding up. So this would be a permanent solution to that. So they would take a hole in the inside of the building and go six to eight feet. So they would take a hole in the inside of the building and go six to eight feet deep to get samples there, and then they want to go on the west side outside the building and go 20-feet deep to get their samples for that. That is gonna be around the $5,000 mark to do that, and then from there, we can, we know, okay, this is what our structure is of the soil underneath, and we can actually build a plan and bid actually doing the work. So those are just a couple of the larger projects we've kind of got in the pipe right now, but...
Did we replace the third-floor roof on the jail, that portion?
We did.
Okay.
Yep, yep, roof is complete.
You all know as well as anyone that we budget pretty tight, but I do believe that we have the funds within capital outlay or out of one of our reserve transfers. We could tackle these projects. If you were interested, obviously, we gather bids and it'd have to come back in front of you, but I wanted to get a feel before I had Brandon get started on it. Is this something you would like us to move forward with?
So at least find out how much it's gonna be.
Good. All right.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thanks, Brandon.
Justin, you have anything today? All right, David Lee.
So the cost-share funding application has been submitted to CADA for Old 50, that along with the high-risk rural roads application. That was submitted several weeks ago, so we should be hearing about those in the April-May timeframe. Also, we are opening dust control bids tomorrow, and we are accepting dust control applications from citizens through the first of April. Once we get all the applications in and get things rolling with the contractor, we expect the magnesium chloride to be applied in the late April, early May timeframe, just like it has been the last three years. The last thing I want to mention is, you know, this time of year, our roads are probably in worse condition at this point than they will be at any point the rest of the year. It's this way every single year, coming out of winter with the freeze and thaw and the moisture and those sorts of things. So we will have crews out patching, hopefully tomorrow if the weather cooperates on our asphalt roads, we'll have as many crews as possible out taking care of that. And then our blade operators are gonna be working some extra hours for the next several weeks to try to bring these, we have some roads that are worse than others, we'll try to get those back in shape. I think I mentioned that we've got a couple of blade operators that are out due to health issues, which means we have several other blade operators that have taken on as much as 50% more road miles to take care of. So it's taken us a little bit longer, partly because we're shorthanded and partly because of the weather that we've had, but we're hoping with a few extra hours that we will get these roads back in shape as soon as possible. So just wanted to mention that and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I was driving on some dirt roads in Osage County, and ours are not bad. Theirs are terrible, so I appreciate our roads very much.
Well, they're not, not where we would like them to be, but we're, our folks are working really hard to get them back.
They do a good job. All right, Janet. All right. Commissioner comments? Nothing? Anything?
I had a ECA meeting last night, and they're gonna do a 5.6% COLA this year. I don't know, I think that's the number, it's been out there in a lot of places about that, that range. Also, they're going back in that, his start program, they had some money left over, so they're gonna give some stipends to the employees as a retention mechanism. Those kind of nice, and they're also looking at including four more counties, which is...
Oh, wow.
I think about 21 counties are covering, so they're far and wide in eastern Kansas. That's about it.
Yeah, we have new business in town, and after our meeting on Monday with community partners, wanted to come and introduce themselves. Amber, you're new to us, not new to business. Come explain what they do.
As he said, my name's Amber Vogler, and then I have Candace Matlock, she's the owner. Our company is Journeys Incorporated. We are a day and residential rehabilitation service for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities on the IDD waiver in Kansas. So we are just coming into our, we have a home office in Emporia, we have a satellite location in Burlington, and now we are coming into Franklin County here in Ottawa, actually, so.
You do serve people on the waitlist.
We do serve people on the waitlist, correct. Not necessarily residential-wise, but a lot of them do offer day service or targeted case management services.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So how do you work with COF? I mean, how does that go?
So when you, when you say work with, we don't actually work with them.
I know, but...
We are very similar to them, correct. We're just gonna be here to offer choice to individuals as a new provider in the area. So ideally, the same thing, we just don't have a workshop. COF does have a workshop, so.
And like CD, COF explained that they're the designated CDDO for our area, but the part that we contribute to is their community service provider, which they're a not-for-profit community service provider, and you're a...
We're a for-profit, correct.
Community service provider, so. Okay, another choice, another provider in town, which is always a good thing, I think, for the community.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Do you have anything else?
Okay. Wednesday, I went to the Ottawa City Commission meeting, welcome mayor. It was Richard Neinsteig's, actually, his last regular commission meeting. It was a fairly short meeting, they did do some honoring to him, but they also did, one of the things I was really interested, they did some project updates on things. If you've gone down Cedar Street, that project there is pretty much complete, they've been working on landscaping. If you've gone over the main, the bridge or heading from Main Street, either way, on K-68, you know that there's been some projects, some work going on there. They've been working on the Cottonwood Lift Station over by Inglewood County. They did say that the gas line extension to Proximity Park is still, they're still working on that because they're still trying to get easements, which I would think is frustrating. You know, you have this big park and then people aren't giving you easements, but anyway, they're still working on that splash pad, and that, to me, that's exciting. They're working on getting some bids on that. Hopefully, that's gonna move forward and possibly a new aquatic center, so they've got a lot of big projects going on, and those are all exciting. On Thursday, some of us went to Richard Neinsteig's reception, it was a nice gathering on, and then on, yesterday, there was another one for John Cohen from the Chamber. And then last night I went, attended the United Way meeting, and they actually, this was their big meeting of the year where they actually choose who they're gonna support for the next couple of years, and that's really all I have. So we do have a meeting next Wednesday, and unless anybody has anything else, we are...
So move.
Yeah.
Good.